Good morning, everybody. It is December 11th, 2020. Happy Hanukkah to everybody celebrating. And this is our Friday morning standing meeting that we have been doing since for a while now to discuss the status of COVID and models of learning. We start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop up into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA cable TV. In our order of business this morning is our call to order opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. There will be time for public comment. And then our administrative items include the COVID-19 update, phases, models of learning, status of athletics, approval of the FY21 budget adjustment, and then we will adjourn. It's essentially the same agenda we've been doing every Friday. And I assume all my colleagues agree to that order of business, but if you could just restate that when I take attendance, I'd appreciate it. So I'll start with you, Erin Williams.
Yes, and here.
Thank you. Paul Kendall?
Here, and yes, and Jim, I just sent you the the warrant book that has the number in it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, I can read it too.
Yep, that's all. It's just that that's all we need for the.
Mark Terry?
Here, yes.
Kathy Bates?
Here, and yes.
Thank you. And then before we get started with Jim's update, I will ask if there are any members of the public that are here that would like to give comment. This would be the time and you can just say out loud, I would like to comment or you can raise your hand.
We've got a couple of people coming in, Laurie, so.
Yeah, I'll give it a few seconds here. Let everybody get settled. So for anyone who just signed in, this is the time for public comment. And I wanted to give you a minute to get settled in case there was something that you wanted to share with us this morning. And any member of the public, this is the time. So seeing none, Jim, I will ask you to update us. So we've had an eventful week, to say the least. And continuing.
So yeah, certainly eventful. But as I begin every Friday morning meeting, thank you to Ed, Audrey, and the entire medical staff and team of in Ashland, whether it's our building based nursing staff, whether it's Ed and the calls to the epidemiologists and the Department of Public Health and in the continuous communication that we're having with the outside medical professionals, I certainly appreciate the time and effort that everyone's putting into this. And I'll start with some good news from yesterday. We had about 200, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, about 200 staff members get tested through a donation program through concentric of Ginkgo. And we should have some results on at least staff for by the end of the weekend. That's hopefully the the process. And what I've done also, just to give you an FYI, is I've reached out to this company because this is a donation. I did reach out to find out if they would be willing to work with us on a testing process or after the break for our teaching staff again. So maybe get an opportunity, this would, we'd have to pay for this as a district, but I think it might give us, we got a baseline and then hopefully we can, we can afford their, their services on the backend. After we come back from break, I think that might be a good opportunity for us. So I'm in negotiations, it's a separate department because of the department we've been working with for the donation. It's grant funded through the federal government, so they can't be involved in the conversation with regard to a purchasing product or their services. So I think that's, that's in the works, just as an FYI. Thank you to Ed for the numerous amount of testing that he does on a daily basis of our staff, our faculty and staff when we are you know, faced with challenges in terms of being close contacts and potential symptoms within our faculty and staff, Ed is right there through appointment to help with the PCR test. And that's been unlike many districts, they don't have that luxury. We do, and I thank Ed and the grant he received and achieved and to help with our staff. I know it's a uncomfortable test. When you get the swab up your nose, but Ed, thank you for doing that. And it has certainly helped us. I think stay open as long as we have, to be honest, the ability to have that when someone might be symptomatic in our, in our system. Obviously, Mark Terry has asked in the past, could it be available to, to everyone? And we don't have the capacity to do that. It's really designed for our faculty, staff and our employees of, of the Ashland, town of Ashland. It's not, it's not a no strictly the Ashland Public Schools testing. So, so thanks, Ed. Next piece of business, I want to make sure that we circle back to Tuesday night, but also, you know, yesterday where we had to make the decision Tuesday night, for those who aren't familiar, we made a decision as a district to start being a remote only system for basically what it amounts to is seven or eight days, five days next week and three days the following week before we go on break. So when depending upon your cohort, obviously you're remote. An additional two to four days. That being said, yesterday we had to make a decision at Mendez to move into a remote only beginning today. We've had a couple and this is really where I'm headed with this is I wanted to be really clear and apologize, I think to the community that if my letter for Mendez was really alarming with regard to transmission, I was trying to to make a point, but not try to add fear to people's lives that transmission can occur in schools. I want to reiterate that while certainly we believe based on our tracing, our testing, our investigation, a specific learning environment did result in transmission within the school. That's not to say it's, there's transmission in every class. It's not, it's not, it's very specific and very isolated in specific learning environment. And I want that to be clear. I think my email and my letter could have come across as it not being that it's happening everywhere and it's not. Ninety-nine percent of our, our learning environments have not seen anything of that nature, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that when we listen to our leaders on the television who state and seem to state unequivocally that it's not occurring. Well, it is, and we know for a fact and Ed and Audrey, correct me if I'm wrong, the medical people that it occurred. But again, in a very specific, isolated incident. So so, so that's really what I wanted to start there. You know, we're certainly cognizant and concerned, especially for our highest needs students whenever we go into the remote session. I want to say to the community that you know, we want to make a commitment to making sure that when we come back on January 4th, that our highest needs students in our, in our buildings are a priority to us and that we want them back in as quickly as we can. We understand and I understand. I stated numerous times, I have my own son who's on an IEP who is not getting the services he needs on a daily basis. I get it. I understand it. I've seen how it has impacted him from his growth. So know that the decisions we're making are really hard. But we're going to work through it and we're going to work together and Kathy Silva's department is going to work with families. Our, our nutrition services department is going to work with those families who are, who are, you know, have food insecurities. We're going to do the best we can for all of our families and students. So I wanted that just to be really clear how we're approaching things. My recommendation, I'm going to share the, the data with you in a moment. It's pretty alarming. And I think then Tuesday, when we started having that conversation and made a decision on Tuesday instead of waiting until Friday, I think it's because people who haven't been tuning in on a daily basis or a regular basis haven't seen those trend lines, right, that we're seeing every single week. And I think one of the, the members commented, you know, we're, we're in the, we're in the deep, deep critical zone right now, if you will, in terms of the metrics of the state. And we've been trending that way over a period of three to four weeks. And it's now it's real when you see the numbers. So I applaud the school committee for pushing me to think about that and pushing our community to think about what's the right thing to do over these next seven, eight school days before we go on the break. As challenging as it is for our educators, it's not easy for them to teach in this model. That's not definitely not, excuse me, easy for our students to be in this model. And it comes with you know, great sacrifice. And, and you know, Dr. Kyra and I have met numerous times about what our summer looks like, right? In providing opportunities for all kids to have opportunities to close those gaps that have been created since last March. Saving our funding so we can do that and offer extended year learning opportunities for, for all kids, not just the kids that we've identified through in the past through a Title One or other grant funds. So that's where we are today. And let me share that with you. Questions on that before I go to the data from the committee?
Jim? That's okay. No more of a comment. So I received a lot of feedback about the Mendez email. And at various levels, like former students that still are somehow on the email list plus current parents that you were blaming the kids. And I think I would like to make that clear and I tried to dispel that. And it's, I think, coming from the place where we're so close to the data and so in the trenches that the follow up with the date, with the numbers of the quarantine staff, the positive staff, et cetera, it helped. But I just got some feedback that it was blaming the students. And I know that's not your intent, so I wanted to just bring that up and let you comment on that.
I mean, I agree. I, that's why I started the conversation by saying I apologize for how it was, was probably could be viewed within the community, but I think I'm not, I don't want to blame anybody. COVID is, it's, it's there are many cases where, you know, I can, I tell you, I sit in Audrey's office and she's like, Jim, I don't, we don't know how this one, this particular case began. We can't, we can't track the origin of specific cases. It's not about blame. It's, the struggle I'm having is, is how much do we relay to a community? How much information do we share? What is the tipping point in terms of how we make decisions? And, you know, obviously we should be challenged on when we're making a decision, like going remote. I totally understand that. I think the community has every right to, to challenge those those decisions we make from an administrative team and an elected board. That being said, I also want to dispel some of the facts or the, well, the spell some of the rumors and myths that, that exist. And the emails that I continually get, I don't know if you're getting them, but I get them. It says, well, the governor said this, and so this is gospel. And this is what's happening. Well, it's not what's happening. And we're seeing it firsthand that it is not happening. And here is a scenario that I'm sharing with you as a community that is hopefully helping you understand why we're making the decisions we're making. It's challenging for sure. And, and I apologize if people are reading it that way. I apologize when my staff thinks you know, to my staff, when adults in our community are writing to me saying, well, staff's at fault, they're doing everything wrong. That's not appropriate either. It's not something that we can you know, we fully understand of how it's transmitting, we, you know, from, from case to case. So that's, that's my only response with that.
Let me just offer one, one comment. I think that it is implicit in this conversation, but we've talked about the data and we've looked at data, you know, weekly, if not more frequently as a committee. I know you, Jim, Ed and Audrey are looking at it daily to hourly. But I think one of the things that's also important is it's not just about the numbers. I think some of the feedback we got was, what is the number? What is the number for this? What was the number? And I think a lot of it is also understanding the fact patterns that are involved. So, you know, it's, it's hearing what's going on. It's hearing how things are happening. It's hearing how many people are impacted in terms of contact tracing, right? So, you know, it may be, it could be one positive case, but if we have to take 20 staff out of a building to get tested, those people may come back negative, but they can't be in the building with kids during that period of time. And so, you know, it is, it obviously is data driven and those are different data points, but it's not just the question of how many positive cases we have in the community, the community rate, which, you know, is obviously like almost everywhere else in the state is going up significantly, but, but it's all the sort of granular, granular level discussions that give us context to what's going on. And, you know, I certainly appreciate the members of the public who have been coming to these meetings in particular, but I think you're right. I think as much as put the data out there. Some people can, if you're not engaged in it, the level that we all have been, you look at a snapshot of data. It doesn't, you don't have to internalize, you don't have to analyze, it's just a number on a page. And you move on and, you know, try to think to communicate to the community the things that they can do to help. And, you know, you it is, it is what it is right now. And I think it's kind of, we get right down to it. It's a question of can we operate or can we not? And particularly given the impact on staffing and the inability to get enough staff into to teach our kids, it really feels like no other choice.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, that, I mean, I had numerous phone calls yesterday with, with parents on, on that point alone, right? I mean, it's the understanding of even just becoming a close contact and then the contact tracing and the web of that spiders off from a contact trace and then a potential positive and then a positive and the requirement to quarantine, that's what's negatively impacting our ability to be open for sure, right? Is not having the staffing to open the buildings. So let me just share if that's okay. This is Tasty. We good to have you share? So here, hopefully everyone can see this. Is this up on the screen? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as you know, there are a few, few numbers that we currently look at in the town of Ashland and, and then the public schools and and in context for those who are just joining us, while there's this metric matrix over here that the Department of Public Health and the Department of Education has adopted in terms of where we should be depending upon our color code. Mr. Terry just, you know, mentioned as well, we're looking at more than just this. There's other pieces of the data that exist that, that we're looking at weekly, Ed, myself and Audrey and the administrative team on a daily basis. So we want to make sure that, that these aren't, this isn't the only one metrics that metric that we're looking at to make decisions. So you'll notice that for the, for those who are joining us, there's a lot of new folks today. There's the state dashboard versus the adjusted dashboard. The state dashboard comes out on, on Thursday evenings and is a result of cases through Sunday. At, we adjust ours on a date on a, I do it daily. Ed sends me the information daily. We adjust it daily, but this is as of seven o'clock this morning. So we currently had 32 cases this week through Friday morning at 7:00 AM. Seventy-three cases in the past two weeks. So our cases per 100 adjusted is about 26 and a half. The state dashboard, we're at 43, 42.78. Obviously you can see then we slide over to the positivity rate, our positivity rate within the community of Ashland is 5.37. And this one metric throws us clearly into the red, right, for our population greater than 10 cases and a positivity rate of over 5%. We've been trending this way for quite some time within our community. I want to point this little piece out, the Tri Valley League. Athletics, as you know, is on pause until if we're in remote only, we're not participating in athletics. I will tell you right now, as of this morning, I've received two emails with regard to the Tri Valley League superintendents coming together to have a conversation about putting a pause on, on athletics through January for everybody. I don't know how well that will be received, but when we're seeing the numbers Norton at 40, Medway at 34, 27, you can see for the most part, there's a consistent increase across the board in a week. So there's concern among all of our communities with regard to the increased cases that we're all seeing.
But to note there, Jim, we have always pretty much since the beginning that we started this dashboard, except for one or two weeks where Norton was higher. We've been the highest of the TV.
You're right.
And and then for people to know, if they look at the state dashboard and I texted you this joke last night and it's half joke and half truth is like, our numbers are closer to Chelsea and Everett than they are to Holliston and Hockington, which is company we never thought we would be associated with.
So so, you know, as, as we look at again, some of the data, I added a couple of things here with regard to someone had asked me to indicate a little bit about staff and buildings and, and again, where I always want to be careful is because of the few staff, we want to make sure that we're not identifying individuals based on anything we provide for privacy and confidentiality and HIPAA laws, and we want to be careful. But I did just put right now currently staff numbers across the, the district in terms of who are quarantined, required to be quarantined. And it looks like I spelled quarantine wrong. I'll fix that before we post it. You know, the, the, the numbers and of these eight, eight of our faculty and staff are positive. We have 120 students currently quarantined. And you can see the percentages, they've been increasing in each building over the past couple of weeks. And again, I want to be clear that when someone becomes that close contact or deemed a close contact by the, the Board of Health, they're quarantined for 14 days. So that's those add to the numbers. And when someone else in their household becomes potentially is positive, it doesn't matter if, if a student is asymptomatic, they're considered a, a close contact. So use my house as an example, if I'm positive, my two sons and my wife need to stay home. They're close contacts. I can't not many of us can just isolate in a very specific area within our homes and have no contact with anyone. We're seeing the asymptomatic of the 62 cases. That's, that's, we've had 62 positive student cases since the beginning of the school year. Thirty-eight have been asymptomatic and 24 have been symptomatic. So this is, this is the data that we look at. I mean, Ed and I and Audrey look at it weekly or daily, but sometimes hourly, I'm texting head, what's it look like this, this hour? So you can see that no matter what the, you know, the metric we use or we use a combination of things. Clearly, I'm very comfortable with the decision that the board made on, on Tuesday that we should be remote only. And based on what I'm seeing within the dashboard, I believe it's imperative as a community. I'm gonna stop sharing this for a second. I can't see my screen. I think it's imperative as a community that we stop and think for a moment as to where we are and what it looks like. And, and to me, in charge of the, of the school system, I'm asking support from the, the board that, that I'm allowed to actually have all of our employees go remote for this next seven days, their next, all the school days that we're in. Because I think it's important that, that we do the right things as adults too, and not be bringing potential community transmission. It's not to say that we're interacting in the business office. And of course, our offices are far apart and I stand with my mask on, he's over on the other side. I just think it's, it's a, a way of of saying this is serious stuff and we're going to do our part as well as a school community to lead in this direction. So that's, that's really where we are. I don't, Ed, Audrey. I know it's on the phone, of course. I know it's on the phone, of course. I- if you have any um thoughts or comments um with regard to 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 our decision to go remote. Um and the number of cases that you're seeing and uh the work behind the scenes.
It feels, it feels like it's been a very busy couple of weeks and when you look at the numbers, then you you start to feel validated. It's been crazy, um just the amount of hours, the amount of work, Ed's doing an amazing job. With all those cases in the last couple of weeks, we're just working pretty much the school cases, but he's working the rest of them. And um it it's it's a lot of work and I think the decision was right, I think what we saw at Mendez. How quickly the virus can can spread, how easily it can spread, I think it's the right thing, so.
Even when doing the right thing, that's the, I mean, that's the the thing I want to mention too, is that even though we're doing the right thing, right? Um it can spread. Ed, anything from your perspective and?
Yeah.
Out of Ashland and.
Yeah, so um I I really would encourage people when they have a minute today um to go to the town's website. Um which is W W W dot Ashland Mass spelled out M A S S dot com. And in the upper right, you'll see COVID um updates. I I did a chart, a weekly, um you can see a graph there and I did send that out to all the principals yesterday. Um you'll see where we are looking at an identical spike right now to what we saw in March and April. But the ages have completely flipped, so in March and April, it was fifty years old and over was the spike. Now it's forty and under the spike and it's almost identical what it looks like on a graph. So I really would encourage people to look at that um and again, you know, with Audrey and I with the contact tracing. A a majority of these, we can definitely trace back to gatherings in the community.
Thank you again both um for all you're doing and your teams and obviously uh it's been completely overwhelming. And because you're doing what you're doing, we're getting this up to date, up to the mid and information and enabled us to make this decision. Tuesday night that is now obviously today, um you know, even more apparent that that was the right decision. I guess I'd like to hear a little bit from from you, Ed and Audrey, if you have any thoughts about um. About how long we can expect um some of this to go on. Um and and obviously, nobody knows the the real answer to that, but just in terms of planning, I've had two types of feedback about the. Timing of our decision the other night um to uh extend the remote. Learning to the end of the calendar year and um some of the feedback is about. You know, why are we doing this if the doing it in these small increments, we're giving people false hope that we're actually coming back. On January fourth, if it doesn't really seem like that's going to be possible, but the flip side and it gives flip side of that is that if you extend it. A little bit longer, it gives people the opportunity to plan and is maybe, you know, more realistic in terms of what we're going on. But as far as what you anticipate to happen over the next, I don't know how far out you can see this. Rolling, you know, four weeks, six weeks, just, you know, a couple of weeks while people quarantine. Um there's gonna be probably quarantines as a result of these quarantines. Um do you have anything you can share that will help us figure out the best timing for this?
Yeah, um so obviously, you know, we we, you know, the i- in the whole country, they they predicted this after Thanksgiving spike. Um obviously, right? So we're we're just at the tail end of that now, what, we're about seventeen days out now from Thanksgiving. Um at the beginning of this week, we were averaging, so again, in the past, you know. When, you know, we were averaging, I would say, let's say fifteen new cases a week, you know, we were getting that every day. Now, just over the last couple of days, I'm starting to notice we are coming down in our dailies coming in. Um you know, for example, if I just know off the top of my head, um you know, Monday and Tuesday, I think we had seventeen each day. Wednesday, we were down to fourteen, yesterday was eleven, you know, I haven't really looked yet today. Um so we're starting to see, I think now we're we're coming down a little bit from that Thanksgiving spike. But our concern now is Christmas, you know, are these gatherings gonna happen again? And we're just gonna see another upward spike, I I don't know the answer.
So and I guess, you know, one of the the discussions then for the committee is whether to anticipate that that's definitely going to happen. Since we saw it with Thanksgiving, rather to continue to.
Sorry to interrupt, whenever you're talking, there's something shaking and it's like tapping on your microphone or something. And there's always this repetitive tapping whenever you're talking, I don't I don't know if there's something that you can notice, but.
I can't hear it on this end and it's just me in this room with.
Not doing it now, so whatever is different, don't move.
Maybe I was sitting too close, but uh but in any event, um I guess it it would like to hear from the committee or Jim on just some ideas. On whether, you know, it's good that it's going down and if that's the trend, I mean, I what I like about the short increments is it gives us an opportunity. I mean, even if we could, if if we're still experiencing what we're experiencing today. But it's improving and maybe at the beginning of the year, we have an opportunity to bring our highest needs population back, for instance, first. Um you know, so these shorter periods of time give us the opportunity to take a look at what is possible and can we do this? Um but on the other hand, I know there is a concern about people's ability to really. Understand what they're dealing with and make their plans and uh hear from us what we really think is the most likely scenario.
Well, and I think Lori, there's discrepancy on what we've voted on, because I've heard people in emails quoting like January eighteenth. But we've only voted through the fourth, correct? Yeah, so I think one is to clarify that, that it's right now, it's through the fourth and then maybe we should decide. What date, what date we would be making a call where it wouldn't be the fourth, like as a part of a regular course of meetings. Whether it's a Wednesday or Friday meeting, um but to that, Jim, if you if you share the dashboard again. And the incident rate one, which is like all the little bars below on the upper left-hand corner. Um you know, our second highest was last week of the top five since this whole thing even started. So if you're looking at downward trending and usually what happens is with the following week's data, the prior week goes up. So if you figure that that fiscal week fifty, which that for those who uh don't understand the week numbers um above the December. That's fiscal weeks um based on a calendar year starting in January, we are probably going to start coming down as Ed said. But then if you go back and look at the ones from July and August, that's where you started to have some of the holiday impacts. Of gatherings and it is a double-edged sword, whether we stay out. Does that give more permission for potentially bad behavior or not?
Yeah, so, you know, I, like I said, I I don't know if there's anything else I think about besides COVID. Um which is sad, uh because, you know, we we certainly have a school system as well to be running uh from an educational component and. Uh school building project at Mendez and, you know, twenty twenty-two budget and all those things that. That normally we'd be involved in right now and and we're still involved in those, but um we're having conversations about COVID only. I think we've always taken a very measured approach uh in a in a data-driven approach. Uh and that we're looking at this on a daily and weekly basis and that's why we need to continue to do so. I, it's a double-edged sword, I agree, Aaron, that that we could potentially say, okay, we're not coming back till after Martin Luther King Weekend and now all of a sudden. Uh people are using that to to have uh extended vacations and uh are um potentially. Um doing something they might not do otherwise, I don't know, uh again, I want to have faith that that our community is is viewing this as. Something that's critically important to do uh in terms of keeping safe, we've got a vaccine that should be rolling out soon. Uh the governor this week also uh talked about. Uh the rollout of of the vaccine and education is part of that phase two, it's a very critical component in uh for educators uh in. Which is, you know, the end of February into March timeframe, um so we're basically asking that. Uh and that's not gonna cure everything, I'm not saying that that it will, I think it's it's another tool for us, but that being said, if if we continue to. To uh follow our protocols, we know they work within the schools. Um you know, and and we should be able to to, you know, weather this uh any of those, you know, peaks and valleys. Again, it goes back to Mark's point earlier, it it becomes about um personnel, right? It it's it come about being able to staff buildings and making sure that we can do that and. You know, when when someone becomes a close contact for no other reason than somebody next to them, they were near someone who becomes positive. It impacts us and it's impacting all of society, so. Um so I think by by taking the approach we're taking is is really the right thing to do, it's it's consistent with how we've acted.
Yeah, and and I think it's also important, like we we talk about Thanksgiving and the spike, it sucked before that.
It did.
Right? The numbers were climbing prior to that, that just is it is something that pushes us over the edge. And at the end of the day, it comes down to, and it's not unique to Ashland, so I'll call out all Ashland people for how they're. Collectively behaving, but let's be an example of how not to do that, because the rest of the states also. Everybody's in this boat, right? The numbers across the state suck, they suck before Thanksgiving, they just suck more after Thanksgiving. Um but you know, people want to look at the data, it's simple, they break it down into two things, can we staff the buildings? And can we have any confidence that we're properly filtering to make sure that we don't have an undue number of cases walking into our buildings, right? That's that's essentially the two factors and that you want to understand how the data plays to that. If our positivity rate's too high, then we can't have confidence that we're not missing cases, right? That's about the positivity rate and if we have the rate of instances that we're having. Then the contact tracing team cannot complete the contact tracing in time for us to be able to open a building, right? And and those are the, if we don't have enough staff because they're quarantined, we have to close buildings, we did that already twice in the past two weeks, right? Um and if the contact tracing cannot be completed, we close, we 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 I say close, we we go remote in a building. We did that at the high school when, you know, so your behaviors, everyone's collective behavior is leading to this. Because if we have too many instances going on, it, we have too many people quarantined that are happen to be staff. If we, you know, we also maybe can't complete the contact tracing from a capacity perspective. Or sometimes we can't complete it because it makes it people not being forthcoming are making it more challenging and and difficult and timely to. In time consuming to complete, so it really comes down to being able to staff the buildings and have confidence that we're properly filtering the people that are coming in. And capturing the cases we can uh as to whether we will operate, if we can do those two things, we want to have the buildings open. But the volume of cases that the COVID task force and contact tracing teams need to do affect our ability to open open that. And the number of people that have to be quarantined impact our ability to staff the buildings. Um so the data indirectly impacts those two things, but it's really, can we staff the building and do we have confidence that we're. You know, properly filtering and and capturing those that shouldn't be coming to school.
I I agree with um all the comments that Aaron, Paul, Jim have offered. Um I've struggled, I've gone back and forth probably fifteen times the last three days over, you know, whether we should just make the call and and. Um be honest about what's likely to happen and then sort of sort of extend out to the nineteenth or eighteenth or whatever that date in January is. Um because that would be about two weeks after um the New Year's holiday when people are coming back. Um and I also go in the other direction saying, you know, let's wait and see, we've always been data-driven, um I anticipate problems. Um I do think it's reasonable to try to figure out a date on which we're gonna make a judgment call, because I think waiting until. The the front for New Years is to say, come back on Monday or or don't, I think that's um that's not realistic. Um so I think we've got to figure something else out there, but you know, I think the one other thing that um we've talked about this call that we should highlight though now and in. Terms of the decision of how long we potentially are out, are trends, right? So we've seen the trend coming where case case numbers were going up, um quarantines were going up and our staffing issues are getting worse. Um you know, sort of the I think the challenge over the next few weeks is gonna be, when are we gonna, when are we gonna know or how are we gonna know? Um when people were remote, that it's going back the other direction, right? And that we have some confidence that, for example, on January fourth, you know, we we did hit a peak, you know, to look at Ed's numbers and and. And we really did hit a uh our peak a couple of days ago and and now it's gonna start to slide back. Yeah, are are we gonna be confident in those numbers in time to make a judgment call for January fourth? Um and I don't know the answer to that, you know, I don't know the answer to that. Um but I do think it's probably as much as I probably lean towards um just making a decision. Be out till the middle of January before, um I'm probably leaning towards leaving it as is right now. Um but as Aaron said, kind of coming up with a, okay, when are we gonna make this judgment call? And it feels like, you know, that's probably next Friday or, you know, a couple of days into the following week just for the holiday. There's there's another point I was gonna make there, but I've lost it at this point, so I'll I'll leave it be a dead look comes back to me.
Yeah, no, just to piggyback on that, Marcus, essentially, it's that balance of the value of of eking out as many in-person days as we can. With providing notice for planning for the families, right? To do what we did for the middle school step, you know, that last week, right, was not ideal for anyone to say, hey, it's five o'clock on Sunday. Your kid's gonna be remote this week, you didn't, we didn't give you any notice, you know, um and people are like, well, you could have been, you could you could. You could have kept on going for another couple of days, you know, it's 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 that it's that striking that right balance and that's the challenge, right? We don't wanna, we don't wanna right now say, hey, we're gonna give you a month's planning and then we get there and we're like, you know what, we we could have probably done another, you know. People, people ask, hey, you should have been remote before this because of the spike, it's like, no. We we were safely in school for a couple of weeks after Thanksgiving and those are valuable days. And and so it's there's there's that balance of of planning and and uh but also just understanding that the 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 value of. Of my kids did it, the the certainly the ones that that get delivered uh services are even more impacted than my kids. And so uh those those days are super important, it's trying to strike that right balance of getting as many in-school persons as we can. And not negatively impacting people by giving them no notice that we had to go remote, right?
Yeah, I disagree with that and I think the other piece is that we've we've talked about our decisions as being for or hybrid. Um we haven't talked about and earlier, um Jim as well, that, you know, there may be a possibility. Anyone number say of getting a smaller subset of students coming back in to either at the elementary level. Or our students of the highest needs, um and we really haven't talked about a framework for making a decision that says. Okay, it's yeah for, you know, eighty percent of our students, I don't mean a specific eighty percent or a random eighty percent, but. But however the numbers work out in terms of who needs um the most in-person learning and for whom it's most important. Yeah, if we just say remote, those kids aren't coming to school, if we say hybrid, everybody's coming in. But I think we may need to start having a conversation about in line with what Jim said before. Look, we we know we have students that for whom in-person learning is extremely important, or so than others. And aiming to be sure that we have a way to allow those students to come back for sure on January fourth unless. You know, things really goes south and we just have no staff, um you know, and I certainly would be supportive of. Of that kind of approach to January, I I think you need more, at least I feel like you need more information from. From Jim Cathy and and others as well, that's easy or wise.
Yeah, I fully support what Mark just said, and I think that's what Framingham and Boston have.
Yeah, there are a lot of, I think a lot of districts, um you know, a couple of. Yeah, there are a lot of, I think, a lot of districts, um, you know, a couple of clients that. Have actually never been in any form of hybrid model this year have been able to serve a subset of their their students who really need. Additional services, whether they're ELL students or special education students or other. I think there are a lot of districts that have done that in some fashion.
Yeah, I agree, Mark. I'm on that page too.
So is that something Jim and Kathy and they could come up with a a plan for us or something to consider for.
There there, yes, there are multiple layers to it, though. Um, yeah, I I've already begun having some conversations with with the union as well, so.
Okay.
And of course, continuing to do this on the shorter increments um gives us the opportunity to um, you know, evaluate that with the most current data about what's happening. With the pandemic on a weekly basis. Um, but I thought it was important that we have that conversation about the timing because um there has been some confusion and. You know, personally, I um like the opportunity to evaluate in the shorter increments, but. I also don't have a tremendous amount of confidence um that. We're coming back in the first two weeks of January, but I hope I'm wrong about that and I hope that we see some information that allows us to. Considering uh to consider either bringing everybody back or uh working with our. Special education teachers to see if there's something we can do to at least start bringing in the highest need students as early as possible.
Yeah, it's people's behavior that will give us that opportunity for plain and simple. It's it's not, it's not generic. It's it's. If people, people see what's happened, don't like it, change their behavior, we got a shot.
So Laura, it looks like we have a meeting next week, right? A week from today?
We will continue to meet every Friday, right?
Yeah, but so we have next week is the eighteenth and the next week is Christmas. So I'm thinking, do we need to pick a. A meeting um after the eighteenth somewhere in there, like even the twenty second or tw- twenty-third. I don't I don't know. What do you think? Or the thirtieth? I mean, do we need to meet again? After the eighteenth?
I I think we probably will. Um, we could probably talk about it next week.
Okay, yeah.
Well, can we, I mean, maybe pose the question and I recognize it is probably the middle of contact tracing at the moment. I could ask at least Audrey um or, no, thanks, Ed. Um, but, you know. And I know it's a probably unfair question, but it's sort of, it's the question of, you know, when will we know it's safe kind of thing? Um, but. You know, i- if we were, let's say the numbers stay flat between now and a week from now. Um, what does that tell us about staff, right? And and then the question is, okay, if you. You push it out to the twenty-third or to the thirtieth or the twenty-seventh or some other date in the month. When do we have a good idea of, you know, are we seeing some regression in the community? But I think, you know, as as Paul sort of articulated, he said before. The real question is the impact on staff in my mind because. We know we're not having transmission in the buildings um because nobody's there. And we're not going to know that that can't happen or how frequently happens until we put kids there. So, you know, if we rely upon that. Alone, we'll never go back because, you know, never, never be able to eliminate that possibility. So it seems like it keeps coming back to staff. Are we going to have enough staff? I don't know how we're going to gather accurate information about that or when we'll have enough. To be able to make a judgment call about January fourth, eleventh, eighteenth or what have you. I guess I'm just, I'm looking for any insight people have at this point. As to sort of what what we can be looking for and and what's a reasonable timeframe to make that decision.
So let me chime in before Ed and Audrey, but again, we're looking at part of the reason not staffing, right? Our use Mind as an example, if we've got twenty-one staff members, they're quarantined for fourteen days, right? So so we know those that that period of two weeks, we won't have staffing. In order to to facilitate the education uh in that building. It's just not going to happen because. So after those fourteen days, we know the time period that eventually that ends. Um, and so part of it is. You know. I don't know if we can choose an exact date because what if we have, you know, a number of staff and just pull up a calendar. Uh, test positive on, you know, December twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth. And then there's a contact tracing and now they become, or they're just contacts with someone who becomes positive. Um, that's when the spider web occurs in terms of.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, but I just, I guess to clarify my point, obviously, things that can are going to change. We know that. It's going to be up and down and and it's going to be, we're going to have these issues for for some period of time. And it's just a question of how severe. I think it's a question of looking at. That that there's data that caused us to have to close on a district wide. Go to remove on a district wide basis on Tuesday, as of Tuesday. And we know because of the number of people quarantined and it's to say it's fourteen days at a bare minimum, we're basically into the holiday break. Um, but it also seems to me that if if we get the results of this test, this testing, the site comes sequence of testing. And it's negative and people are coming off quarantine. There, one of that at some point doesn't mean there aren't going to be new cases in the quarantine. But everybody's quarantine now should be clear of that by January fourth. It's just a matter of how many more cases we have in between and. So that that seems to suggest to me that in terms of what we have available for staffing on January fourth, if you back out fourteen days from that. You know, at least that tells us what we'd have that day, right? Um, subject to further change. So that that's the kind of thought process I'm trying to get at. I know we can't predict what's going to happen on on any given day.
I I circled Monday, the twenty-eighth on my calendar. Um, it is just a a date that um. A lot of our test results come through on the weekend and, you know, we'll see, you know, I mean, that's what happened on. The middle school concern is that came, you know, we got those test results on a late Sunday and that's what had to occur. Um, and, you know, with those trends of looking at, you know. The cases, I I think that's a full week in advance of the fourth. That at least gives us some idea indicator of of what we have for cases within the community and within our faculty and staff ranks.
Yes.
Well, let's meet that Monday instead of obviously the Friday before. And or Tuesday morning, if you need the day Monday to get all that information together.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, whether it be Tuesday or Wednesday, will be better. To be able to strike that right balance of of having as much information we have, but give notice.
Yeah, oh, that's right. And that's the problem I'm having is what what's, you know. What's the appropriate amount of time?
Right, because I mean, at at the end of the day, if we push it too far, you know, forward, we're we're back, I guess, um, we end up with the same. Yep, we were talking about with Stephen and athletics. Well, if you're asking me now, you're not giving me the time, you know, the time to get more accurate update information. You know what the answer is going to be, right? So um, it's striking that right balance.
Well, what about Ed and Audrey? Like, at what point, you know, will you feel most comfortable being able to advise us? How that beginning of January period looks?
Morning on the fourth.
Oh, you didn't know today's our last day?
Don't you dare.
Yeah, you know, I think um. I think we have to let, I think, I think we have to see kind of, let's let us see what next Friday looks like. Um, that's going to kind of let us know what trend we're heading in, I think, a little bit, hopefully.
And does Maven let you know how many tests are outstanding before or you only get it once the results in?
We only, we only get it once the results in and unfortunately Maven doesn't let us know a negative test. We have to manually ask for that. So we get notified immediately for a positive. But like, let's say somebody says, oh, I went and got tested. We have to manually ask for that person's data to show the negative test. And remember, our staff, um, Ed doesn't have access to, we have forty-plus communities our staff work in. Um.
I was just going to ask that, how are we going to know?
Yeah, because staff has been really good with contacting us.
So 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 it is our positivity rate then that we show on our in our chart. State data, because obviously you won't be able to compute it if you had to go manually ask for the negatives. You can't get a. You can't get a total test if you're really getting the positives.
I'm pulling, I'm pulling the Ashland data out of positives. That's what we pull up.
It's state data, Paul. Yeah, good. So as far as the positivity rate, you need the full number, but you have pushed that. So that that's based on the state data. Okay.
Correct, right. Yeah, every Thursday, the state sends us an email with how many tests and positives have happened for Ashland residents. So we didn't answer your question, Mark.
I can chime in for a second.
So, yeah, sorry.
I fear that from past history, I think we know that people gather. We start for Halloween, we start for Thanksgiving. And I think with the holidays starting today and then with Christmas, people are going to gather. So five or six days after they gather is when we're going to start to see all the positives start to come in. Which will lead you up towards. The New Year holiday. And I fear that those who don't know they're positive yet are going to gather at New Year's and. I think the spike is going to happen five or six, seven, eight days after New Year's when people gather that. If you just know the incubation period is through the fourteen days. So that's what I fear. I fear that we're going to have um. Backpedal like we've been doing for the last couple of weeks. We've been really working hard to try to figure out. You know. What to do with all these positive cases and to try to chase them. So. That that's my concern. My concern is that people are going to gather. We know that they're going to gather New Year's and then. You know, a week after New Year's, we're going to start to see the cases coming in and. Then we start, you know, quarantining and that's. Kind of, I I feel that if we take that pause, those fourteen days after January fourth. Maybe that might help us get through to to June if we eliminate all those people that have partied over the holidays. Just kind of where my head is going at.
Thank you, Audrey. That is, that's really helpful for me to understand and and probably everybody else as well. And and I think then the question just becomes, you know, whether we expect that and preemptively make those. Uh, plans, um, because we're hearing that that's probably what we're going to expect or whether we. Like you say, do as we kind of have been doing and let it unfold, but then we have to respond to it, which makes your jobs a lot more difficult. And possibly even causes more transmission.
We know that what we're doing is working. We we know that all the stuff we put in place is working. We had that case at Mendez, but that was, we can't help that. That's just the nature of the disease or the virus. But if we can try to get all the nurses on board for those two weeks after January fourth and. Do the contact tracing and make sure that they're not coming into our buildings or. Maybe it'll help us quarantine all the ones that have partied and and gathered and then let us sail through the rest of the year, hopefully. There's no few holidays after that, except for when you get into.
Yeah, I I guess my concern though is it depends on who we're quarantining, whether that whether that helps us open or not, right? If uh, if we're quarantining, you know, the the week after uh, after that forty staff members. Uh, that means we're not opening for another two weeks after that 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 quarantine period, right? So. Um, it might be that, you know, it need to be three weeks after, right? Um, something like that, that that it all depends on who. Who flushes out of that, um, the, you know, who flushes out where that is. Is it more. Community members that we are able to quarantine, but if it, we finish the contact tracing, we quarantine, but there's too many of them that are. Um, staff members than would might need to be pushed to another week, right? So.
That's a big question. And Audrey. Anybody else?
Well, just a thought as we talk about potentially, and I know Jim, you're just starting this conversation with the union. Um, but if we were able to figure out a way to bring the most. Needful students back into the building, those parents knowing that their kids have a chance to be back in the building, I feel. Will be the most compliant in their behavior. Knowing that there's the chance to come back in because of how important the in-person learning is for them. So I think that.
I I I think that's kind of a leap, Erin. I don't know if that's fair to really say.
I I again, I I I think. I want to be.
But actions aren't 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 isolated to the group they impact, right? Um, so they're they're, you know, that group of people isn't to blame that their kids aren't in school.
Right.
Right? So it's not a one-to-one, I behaved well, so my kid gets to go. That's unfortunately not how it works. Otherwise, you know, uh, that would be very, that would be awesome if only the people. That misbehave got impacted, but that's just not the way it works, unfortunately.
Right, more so what I was saying is they're going to be out of school anyway for the Christmas break and. If they have the opportunity, like each of these families would have an opportunity to whether to quarantine themselves or not. Leading up to getting back into school. I I I completely understand Audrey's fear and thus, and I believe. What she is saying is true. But I think we have a better chance of having. Success and having not positive students in that population. Because of the desire to get the kids back into school. That's because most of us, most of us will be isolated throughout the holidays.
Erin, I I agree with you, but we need the staff there, you know, and that's to me. I in in some respects, if the. If if the premise that you put out is is right, that parents who most want their kids in are going to be more careful. I I think I think there's something to that, but it's not exclusively that, of course. Um, because it it's not, as Paul says, it's not a direct correlation, but it to me, it really comes down to. You know, making sure that those students um are and their families are careful. But if all our staff are not available or sufficient number of staff are not available. You know, we're not going to be able to do anything. Um. I I I guess I'm coming back to the question, sort of what what the date is and I should say, I also, I fear the truth of what Audrey said. It's exactly the argument for being remote until the nineteenth. But I guess the only sense I'm getting from this conversation is we don't know yet. We don't know today. Um, and it seems like the the result of that means that go forward with our normal meeting next week. I think it was in question. And we put another meeting on the calendar um for somewhere around the twenty eighth, twenty ninth. And, you know, if if for some reason we make a decision next week, fine. Um, if we choose to um hold off and and then we've got another date on the calendar, which it probably makes sense for us to meet then anyway. Um, and we can, we can modify. I know, I mean, obviously, we can all keep thinking about it and and add a meeting if if there's a need to.
Yeah, I I agree, Mark. It it depends on. When the, there's no more value to making a decision now than just making it next Friday, right? And then at some point, there is that balance of, okay, now there's more value to make the decision at a point to give people notice and. You know, uh, whatever that tipping point is, I I don't know if it's the, if it's next week, if it's the thirtieth, if it's whatever it is. Um, but just to follow up on what Aaron was saying, understand, Aaron, that. Aside from just the volume of cases that impact the COVID Task Force. His ability and Audrey's team's ability to do contact tracing and finish that. This isn't about the number of students quarantined, right? If it all was, we were able to finish contact tracing. And our positivity rate wasn't astronomical, so we understood, so we think we weren't missing lots of cases. We would be open if we could staff it, right? And those those ones that we were quarantined would be quarantined and isolated and. And we'd be, we'd be open, right? So it's not just the numbers game of how many students are quarantined. If we. If right now, it was, it was a number of students, but we had the staff and we were comfortable with our contact ratios completely, we'd be open. Right? It it so it just that they, um, so it's more, it's more about the that that impact of. The volume. Impacting our ability to do contact tracing at this level that we quarantined everybody that needs to be quarantined. Impacting our ability to do contact tracing at this level that we quarantined everybody that needs to be quarantined and are staffing, that that's the combination of those two things is to. But tips us, right? So.
All right, sounds like we're not, you know, we're going to at least wait until next week to further this conversation and we'll see where. We are at then and take it from there. Everybody good with that? Unless there's anything else to add to that piece today?
No, I'm good with it.
Anything else on the phases, models of learning before we move? I don't know, Stephen, if you have anything additional to add. We talked about athletics on Tuesday, and at this point, it seems connected to. What's happening with all the rest of this. And it sounds like Jim's going to be having some conversations with people from other communities that we interact with, so. I just wanted to give you the chance, if there is anything additional you want us to know to share it this morning, since you're on the agenda.
No, we're all set. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Laurie, I'm gonna, I I think the next thing, I'm going to share my screen, which is the motion.
Thank you.
If if that's the next, is that the next item on the agenda?
The next item.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is about, we we had town meeting the other night and the. There's been an adjustment to the school budget, and this is the number. And the motion would be to approve the FY twenty one adjusted school budget of thirty four million, eight hundred and forty three thousand, five hundred and seventy three. Somebody wants to make that motion?
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Erin?
You're muted, Erin, if you're still there.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, Laurie, do do we want to have Jim just provide a little, a very brief context for those who didn't follow town meeting as to what and why the.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. I was just going to ask him if he had anything he wanted to add to that for context.
The context is that each year, you know, we set our budget and depending upon. The governor's budget and which still hasn't been signed, as far as I know. We make adjustments to. The overall town budget that was passed this year happened in June, typically in May, maybe it was even July, but. So these are the net differences of the chapter seventy. Increase or for us, it was a stay flat. Number or the town local aid. So we we adjust those with the town policy of splitting the the excess. Or if there's expenses to seventy thirty, so that's the town policy. So this is just an adjustment based on. The the governor's budget compared to what we passed in the summer.
And if I just asked to clarify that, Jim, I remember, right? This is about what we originally projected. Back before COVID, that we had to make cuts because of what was anticipated. This is more or less putting us back where we we thought we'd be for the year.
It's within. Yeah, it's 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 within sixty thousand dollars of where where we were before we had to to make those cuts. Yeah.
Yeah, and and so the effective difference is just the additional costs we will plan to incur. For the remainder of the school year for COVID related expenses, which is essentially a net deficit from that, just because it was unplanned before.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a good point, too, Paul, right? We've spent one point five million on COVID. A little more than, and those funds have dried up because they were state and federal funds, or actually federal funds. But yet we still have recurring costs. For the remainder of the year, and this is, those funds will help offset that because now it has to come out of our operating budget.
Any questions about that? Okay, so I think we're done, unless there's anything else you want to add, Jim?
Nope. No, I want Ed and Audrey to have a good weekend.
And Ed and Audrey to have a good weekend, too.
And I'm actually headed to Worcester to pick up mask Audrey. So this, we've got a, I don't know how many free masks we're getting, but kids mask. And other masks through the state, through the Department of Ed, but apparently. They there went to certain locations, Quincy and Worcester, and so each district has to go pick up their own, so. I'm on my way to Worcester and I'll deliver them to the schools.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
One more, one more thing real quick, everybody, sorry. Just let everybody know, it's, we we are doing that shop with a pop again this year and the principals have already, we've identified sixty five. I'm Ashland kids that are going to be participating this year, and we're doing it obviously very different. It's going to be a drive through. Thing next Friday night at the Desa, but I just wanted to let people know.
Awesome.
That is moving forward.
It's one of the best nights, yeah.
Great. Wait, Ed, Ed, can you talk more about that?
So, yeah, real quick, so we we partner with Framingham and Holliston and Natick. And we, there's four of us, four officers, we gather donations throughout the year. And we allow our principals to pick children that are very in need, that might not have a great Christmas. And in the past, what we've done, we've usually done it at Target. Each each child's given a fifty dollar gift card, they're partnered with a police officer to go shopping in Target. You know, some of them get toys, you know, we we suggest they get gifts for things like that. But in the past and this year, too, Target and Staples make additional donations to us. To help any children that might need those necessities, underwear, clothes, things like that, you know, that we can go above and beyond the fifty dollars. But for this year, because of COVID, we've partnered again with Target and Staples also. Each child this year is going to get an Amazon gift card, and we're going to be doing a drive through event where they pick those up. At the Desa Auto Auction in Framingham this Friday night, a week from today. Starting at five thirty, so we'll have fire trucks there, different things like that. And so that's how we're going to do it this year.
That's really wonderful. Are you still taking donations for that?
Yes, always, always.
And how how can people donate?
They can, they can get in touch with me and the checks get made out to Shop With A Pop. It is tax deductible. Yep, and any monies we have left over each year, we just put toward the following year. And again, one of, I think, one of the greatest things is we allow our principals to pick the kids. And which really has been a huge benefit for us, too.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Like as if there wasn't enough to thank you for, Ed, but thanks, thanks for that. That's that's an awesome program.
We're gonna start calling him at Santa Claus here.
Absolutely.
Santa Eddie.
Something like that.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn if everybody's ready.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
All right, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, everybody. We'll see you next.